I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, KD, wanna talk about the housing thing?
Yeah, so KD with Community Action Program, I was here, I wanna say Fall, talking about what we're hoping to do. So, we're looking to apply for another development for our senior living. I know last time I had talked about possibly two duplexes. Looking at the lot and after getting a survey, looks like we could possibly put in three duplexes, so that's what we're looking at. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to take a look at what we were proposing as far as the layout. So, there is a, with this grant, there's a donation that we have to get, a match funding, in order to apply for it. Our budget looks to be around, close to, just under a million, to get the three duplexes built. So, we're, wanna talk to the town about a couple different things. The first thing is the Stanley Drive, possibly donating that to the town in hopes that you could help with maintenance of that. So, I don't know if we wanted to talk about that first, or how you wanted to proceed with the other requests as well.
I thought we plowed this in everything anyway. I thought that was part of the pound streak back to the parking lot, right? The parking lot is there to maintain.
Okay. That's fine. I was wondering, because I sent the survey, and so like it would be basically a continuation in between the parking lots, and then also the tee-off into the other development, making that all Stanley Drive. So, if that's not something that you wanna do, I understand that, but we're just wanna talk about it.
I mean, they can't be a street when it goes from parking lot to parking lot, can it?
Well, we'll have to talk about that one, get with lawyer.
Alright, sounds good. So, the other big thing is the, I guess, the old septic system that's basically running behind there, possibly asking the town for help with getting rid of that. You'd ask to get a ballpark price, so we got a price from, that I submitted to you, an estimate. I wanna say it was seven, remember that?
It's over six thousand.
So, that would be pending grant approval. We would, I don't know if the town would be doing that, or we'd still hire them, but it would be like a cash donation equivalent to about that amount. So, I don't know if that would be something that the town could help us with, with this development?
It was seventy-five ninety.
Okay.
From that Swingle?
Yes.
Is it necessary that the septic tanks actually be removed completely?
Yes.
Because when we hooked down to the sewer systems, all we did was pump them and fill them. It's not the, that's not where the hump is, that's not where the tanks are. The tanks are up here.
It's a male.
This way. That was just the leach field, is all that is out there.
Okay.
So, it's not, not the tanks or anything.
Oh, okay.
I'm Josh Ray, I'm with Community Action also. Talking to Swingle, he's the only person that I had got a quote from on that. He was saying, you know, they have to take the overburden off of, if there's any affluence in there, or any human waste in there, and he has to pay to have that haul somebody's license. So, if any of those leach fields have anything in there, for them to haul it away, it's not just able to grade it out. So, that's, that was where that cost came in. I don't know that if it, if it needs to be inspected further and see, make sure that you're, you can point out where you think the tanks are at. As long as the tanks are off the property, it would just, you know, obviously we change that bid, or that proposal, just remove that area, so that we can, 'cause that's pretty much in the middle of the layout that we wanna have to build on.
It's probably something you guys, you know, one of our guys will get involved with, if it, if it ever was full enough where it done that, which I don't, just having this building, I don't think it ever was, but, so yeah, it may have to be, might, may have to be tested, just to make sure.
Okay. Is that something you said, I hear you said, that you have city guys that could do the work?
Well, it's cordoned if it comes back clean, maybe.
You let me know what you want me to test for, or get with, I mean, I've not met any of you guys yet, but just let me know what you need, and I can get it done.
Need to coordinate him with superintendent.
Brad's superintendent. Yeah, talk to him, and he'd be your go-to guy.
Okay, excellent.
So, I guess the point I'm in right now is, I gotta apply for this development in about two weeks, and I gotta get all the numbers put together, so we've been working on trying to get those numbers put together. And, so I think we'd have to move on whatever we're gonna do with that leach field or septic issue. So, I don't know, would the town be willing to help if there was an issue where we have to get rid of it?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so that could help. So, the other thing was utility hookups and permit fees. Those are kind of, I don't know, would the town be willing to help waive permit fees and donate the utility hookups?
What we do on the other ones? Did on the others, yeah, that's what we've done before, so.
Now, I wasn't involved with the previous development, but I wanna say that the parking lot, did you guys help aid the parking lot? Or is that all?
It was the road.
Just the road.
To the parking lot.
Okay, I got you. Would the town be willing to help with a parking lot?
Yeah, I think.
That gets into a gray area. I don't think we can.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I think we supplied all the water hookups, sewer hookups, electric hookups, all the wiring and all that stuff before.
And took the road back to, took the road back to the parking lot.
Just took it back to that, so, that's, like I said, that's a gray area. We take care of roads and everything, but when you get to the parking lot, if it was to take care of that one, then everybody else in town won't have to take care of their parking lot, so we gotta study.
We'll have to, we'll have to talk to Scott anyway on that.
Okay, well, I was, so just trying to get a match to get this development, so, you know, that's where I'm at right now. So, those were some of the ideas that we had, and we'd be open to any other discussion, I guess. Are there any questions as far as what we're trying to do?
How much did you say the match would be for that Lee and Bill project?
We're, we need to match at least ten percent. Yeah. I was gonna introduce Josh, but he already did. These are project managers, so I'm trying to get the development together, and then if we get awarded that, then he would be responsible for making sure that it gets built correctly, so. You'd be seeing a lot of him if we got awarded that.
Okay, we'll follow up with our lawyer, and see what, what we can do and what we can't do, and then we'll let you know.
So, instead of just, instead of like four, you're talking about these six up back there then?
Yes, six units.
Or, yeah, could put three and three, or how's that?
It would be three duplexes, kind of in a U shape.
U shape?
Yeah, surrounding the parking lot.
Did the town attorney email you? Cause I know you've got his email, didn't you? His concern was if these duplexes are within the town limits. He said it looks, according to Park County GIs, it looks like they are mostly just east of the town's border. A small part of the buildings are within the town. And then he was questioning, maybe making a voluntary annexation as part of the deal to assist with further development. I thought, I think he was supposed to be here today, but he probably wasn't able to get away.
So, that never was annexed then, or did we get that from the school or anything?
Well, according to GIs, it's, it's not according to Scott's note, but we'll have to do some further investigation there to find out for sure.
That would make a difference as far as your concern for the zoning and annex, or permitting to a part of its.
Yeah, I'd kinda have to get something from the town saying that it is zoned properly to build on it.
Yeah, we'll definitely have to get that all straightened up before we do anything. I'm glad you remembered that, I didn't.
Then when I apply for the grant, anything that we agree to, I would have to have a letter from the town stating this is what we agreed to, and an approximate cost to it, so, anything I could do to help get there, just let me know. I'd be happy to work with you. Any other questions for me?
I think so, thank you.
Appreciate your time, and if you have any questions for Josh or not, but if not, then we'll carry your guys away.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Okay, so, we got the minutes from last meeting, and need to have a motion to approve. I'll pull them real quick.
I'll make that a motion to approve.
If that's as read, second, on favor? Okay. Uh, grants and warrants. Claims and warrants during the month of March is ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And the April twenty-first meeting, it was two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that, claims and warrants. Okay.
On favor?
Alright. Jump in anytime, right?
He said, "Jump in anytime."
Might just let him know what he's signing on, the claims.
Nobody told me.
There's always, you've been having these meetings, perhaps.
Since it's fresh in your mind, you can do that.
Duff on the guy. This is all one. Yep. You just need to put yours out here.
Anybody wanna let Thomas, he's a new member of the council, took Bobby Stewart's place. Alright, payroll warrants for three twenty-four, three thirty-one, four seven, four fourteen, four twenty-one, in the amount forty-four thousand, two hundred and three dollars and forty-nine cents. Have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I'll second it. On favor?
Alright.
Okay, bank reconciliations are in the amounts of utilities, two million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and four dollars, forty-two cents. Excuse me, the town, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars even. Payroll, two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. And customer deposits, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, zero cents. But, two billing adjustments, one for forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents, and the other one was zero. We'll have to approve those.
Make a motion, we approve the billing adjustments, and do we have to approve the reconciliation?
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
And then we have a resolution, two oh two two dash oh four dash, oh one.
That's the reconciliation outside it too.
And our, the resolution is to transfer the money, one account to the other, to, for the cemetery improvements. Okay, not a, non-building improvements.
I'll make a motion to transfer that, so the bills can be paid.
Okay.
Second?
On favor?
Alright.
You have the original to sign, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Now that, the, present the ADA Transition Plan, Draft Plan, and Title V Plan. This is open for any public comment. The draft plans are available for review in the utility office around here. Public comment will continue through May fifth. If there's no public comment, Lisa from HWC will then prepare the ADA Transition Plan to be approved at the May nineteenth meeting by resolution. This will meet approved, that same evening, once approved, it will be sent to the state for approval. That's American Disabilities Act, it's a plan that we have to do, that any, any further roadwork, sidewalk work has to meet certain specs, and stuff like that. But that is available for public review at the utility office. And we've got a cemetery discussion that Terry's gonna talk about.
Okay. Okay, everyone received, I hope, the email list of plans, the map, the, all they're waiting on now is you guys to say yes, that's fine. The only question that I saw after I talked to Paul in the park discussion, see, the way they have got a number, they've got like the first row starting at the farthest west side, but now they're switching it so that the road line will be at the road, so it'll follow through with the rest of the sections. So, if it meets you guys' approval, then Kathy can go ahead and page it, and then they will record it at the recorder's office, and then we'll receive the actual maps. The guys, I think Brad and them have been up there, and what they've got pinned, I mean, I don't really, this is not my expertise, obviously, but they've got them pinned, and hopefully the guys know what they're gonna do with them. I'm hoping Brad. So, it's, I mean, it's ready. That's what we're waiting on, I think, isn't it Kathy, for them?
Yeah, and that's what I said, we really can't go up there and apparently think they need maps, but once we get the originals.
Once we get the big maps that we have now, then you'll be able to go up there. But that's the only thing I saw was different, was that they were starting in the wrong direction. So, if you guys are good with it, then I think we're ready to move on, and that'll be done. The roads and stuff, of course, will be the town's, to put the roads in and things like that, but other than that, they're, they're done with their part.
So, we've got a copy of the ordinance here for.
Yeah, it'll have to be revised, I guess we can get with Scott.
Yeah.
Cause a section G and H will have to be added, if it's not that.
Yeah, the last time there was, it was twenty fifteen.
Right, we'll add more spots, so the total is eight hundred and eighty-eight new spots up there, so.
Thank you for all your efforts on that.
It's been amazing.
Wanna do it again next year?
No, I don't think we had to work on it for several years, just simply.
Hopefully, right?
Only thing that, that maybe had to that, what they done up there, they went from the corners, front and back, and then they put a pin in the center. It would be nice if he could let two guys go, cause we got all them old pins that we pulled out of the playground stuff up there. If they could put them in line, cause that's the way C is, we put a pin on each side and in the middle, so you know where each row is. Keep it pretty, pretty straight if you put it. It'd be a good place to send Jimmy and somebody.
We got pins.
But yeah, I mean, you can lay it, you could go up there and find a grave, but it'd be easier if you could do every row, and I think there's enough in them pins.
Okay, we can get some, so work that in, Brad, thank you. FYI there for everybody. And you have an email from the cemetery on the natural gas. What is, huh?
So, everybody agreeable for me to have HWC quote the whole, well, they made it so difficult that you just.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Unless one of you guys think you're, you're, no, I'm being serious. I'd hate to spend the money, but I think we're gonna have to.
Yeah, that's.
Spend about thirty thousand to get about a million dollars through the community.
Sounds like pretty good.
Catch up a lot of payments.
When's the next grant period?
The next grant is July.
July. They think they'll be ready by then?
Yeah, that's why he had a question to make sure you weren't planning any major drainage projects, or. If not, they thought by this net, that they'd be able to have this.
There's many, Jackson, go ahead and let them do it to get the, that's what that is, it's the road paving thing, where it's, they, they don't, we don't know what the next one is, but.
It's a grant program through NDOT. The, the match is, the grant's seventy-five, and the match is twenty-five percent, which is a pretty good deal.
And when that started, it just, paperwork was pretty simple, and just handled it, and then it escalated.
You're gonna make everything difficult.
Yeah. So, yeah, let them know if you would please, and then, let's say, look at the marketing thing for the gas, and, and choke.
I got this after the fact of having that all typed up, it's a request for a donation for the 5K. If you wanna sponsor, then you'll have the name on back of the t-shirt, like in the past. They kinda changed it, cause it's either fifty for the silver sponsorship, which is medium print, or a hundred for the gold, which is the larger print. Well, they changed it a little, we used to do the platinum, whatever it was, for seventy-five, but it's either the large or medium, like it's like this year.
I'll save that.
I'm good. Motion?
Motion, second?
Second.
On favor? Thank you. Have you sent, has all those letters went out yet?
Pardon?
Has all those letters went out yet?
I don't know.
Oh, I mean, for the 5K?
I don't know. Not in that.
Well, don't leave, don't leave the club, Al.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's gotta get him out. Okay, Kerry, you got anything?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Anne?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you today? I came here because I forgot to come earlier and ask permission from the town to block off that one section of Patterson Street by the ballpark, to keep the little kids from getting ran over in the road, cause they wanna play in the road all the time. I come back away from the driveway to Mark that lives next door, so he can back out if he needs to. And then we block it off clear down through the street sign at the end of the block on Patterson Street. I just need permission to do that, and I failed to ask, and I'm sorry.
I'll turn that into a motion.
Okay.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You got it.
Thank you. And I also want to say that I appreciate all the work that the guys have done. They're working on the lights for the weather. We have somebody that's going to build dugouts on the other, uh, field, and we're waiting on the weather to do that also. So we're just kind of, whatever happens, happens. And he worked yesterday and mowed the yard, and we had a lot of compliments about how, how good the ballpark looked because it, it got away from us because of all the rain. But he worked on it long enough that it looked pretty good by the end of the day, so I just wanted to know, thank you for, for doing it. But we got a lot of compliments on how nice it looked.
Thank you.
And I have to go.
John?
So just a little update. We've got thirty-eight calls in the last thirty days. Uh, that's down about fourteen. We had fifty-two in the previous month. We talked about cameras for the trail. Have got approval from the county to place one of those camera trailers down there temporarily, just to kind of see what it looks like. I need to get with the guys at the sewer plant where we can get it. It's a telescopic tower and we'd probably have to pull it in with the Kubota. We just, they, they just want it to be secure, and I understand that. The check engine light come on in the Ford. It's an E VAP system. I've had it down there once. They thought they fixed it. It came back on. It's nothing critical, but they're trying to figure out what the issue is. The policy manual that I've been working on, it should be wrapped up this afternoon and go out for, uh, officer signatures. That's been a long time coming. Darian's working on, looking for grants for a electric bike, something that we can jump on if we have an emergency on the trail or maybe even utilize during the Coverbridge Festival some. We were approved for two thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars through the L C C for that light art. That was, last time I thought we'd got it, but hadn't got the confirmation. That check should be here the first week in May.
How much was that, Tom? I'm sorry.
Two thousand five hundred and forty-four. And just as a reminder, any first responders, if you know, paint handles have a first responder night tonight from five to eight P M. Serving hot dogs and they've never done it to my knowledge, so I'm not sure what it would be about, but just a reminder.
Don't sign anything.
That's pretty much a wrap for me. I hope you have questions.
Any questions for John? Thanks for all your work. Appreciate it. Brad?
I got a couple things. I had a call from S U S. Just wanted to know what color we wanted to paint the tower. And I told him I'd get back with him. I said, "Know what you guys wanted to do? The white with the purple stripe? Or go all white or up to you guys?"
White and either purple stripe or monozima purple. And do, do it with the stripe because the stripe's what looks bad on it. Dark, dark colors.
You put monozima in letters in purple?
Yeah, would you, would you want to block letters or script?
Oh, we got people can read it. I think it's a block like you got now. So we got some scripts of the kids can't read it.
I didn't get that thought. Good point. So just all white, purple letters, block letters?
And another thing, I didn't know how soon you wanted Water Street, uh, one way. Is that as soon as possible or is that?
Probably an ordinance first, though.
Yeah, we got different ordinance and then posted for thirty days, so.
All right. And another thing, the SCAG, our good mower, it's down. Hoping to have it running by Thursday or Friday, so we've been using the John Deere. And the John Deere is sketchy anyway, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Paper, people, anything? Well, Rex, welcome.
Thank you.
Now it's our turn, so if you've got anything to bring up or any questions?
No, I don't think so. Well, I did attend the I S O uh, training at the third grounds along with Mr. Stone. So it was quite informative, good, good information. The thing that come out of it, out of a hundred, there's a hundred and six points, I think, that you can get totally. And water particularly is forty of them, so. Yeah, that means height flushing and you know, testing and that kind of stuff. A big hitter is the, the capacity of water tower. I didn't realize carrying it at a half, half volume hurts the, the water, the I S O versus carrying it three-fourths full, you know, that kind of stuff. And that's what you look like, look at. Anyway, it was good training and I've got the point thing here, and maybe the time we do it again, we can change points and, uh.
That's, that's on probes, isn't it? Or how that wells kick on the tower?
Yeah, they're on probes.
Probes?
I don't know how, I used to think you run it a half full or so, or I don't know anymore. Anyway.
Say three-quarters. It's possibly a hundred thousand gallon tank, but you know, your overflow's like at seventy-five or something like that.
Okay, and I, I called overhead door and it was a two hundred and twenty-five dollar savings on the door. So I told him to load the door and somebody'd pick it up. I hadn't heard any more about it, so.
Didn't he say that was pretty dangerous though?
Yeah.
Without having the right equipment?
Yeah. I was changing the garage door at home one time many years ago, and the spring broke and it went by and grabbed my T-shirt and literally ripped it off me. And I said, "That's my last garage door." So it could have killed me, so, and, yeah. They are dangerous.
Their labor is.
Yeah, because of that email.
I don't want nobody getting hurt either.
The cables that are attached to the torsion shaft are also attached to the bottom section and are under a lot of tension.
Raises and lowers it. Nobody's able to fix it that way and have a company do it.
Did we ever change them before?
We have those ones up here in shop.
We have?
So you want me to have them put it in when it comes?
That's up to you guys, but I don't want to see somebody get hurt either.
Well, I don't either.
Yeah.
I don't have guys that even want to do it, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. That's all I can.
Okay, uh, we do have a opening for a labor's position with the town. Last time we filled it, uh, we just went by word of mouth and had a couple, uh, and didn't advertise. Want to try that again? Want to advertise the interview or?
I'd say in, I'd, in my opinion, interview the objects we have again, see what happens. I mean,
I've got two in mind.
You got a couple? Okay. So we can get together.
Pulled off on advertising right now.
Yeah. We'll get with you.
Seems like it's a little quicker this way.
Yes, no, I agree. And get the names and so forth.
It's a busy time of year for them guys.
Yeah.
Especially with the tire and everything coming up.
Yeah, they're, they're supposed to be here pretty quick, aren't they, on S U S?
Some equipment sitting there already.
Oh, really? No, I haven't noticed it.
It'll be this way for a while.
Think? Kathy?
The only other thing I have is I haven't advertised for the housekeeping position because I was hoping to find someone without doing that, but I'm going to advertise next week.
Okay.
I'm getting too old.
Bring your great kids up. They'll get you in shape.
Yeah, I can't lock that. Just want me to advertise at one time in both papers or?
Yeah, see what comes out. Do you have something else, John?
I was just going to say, I got involved on the tail end of that last situation, but I'd be more than happy to get in on the front and verify some information.
Thank you. We'll do that. Appreciate your help on that. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.